Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our first remote meeting of the County Council. This meeting is taking place on Wednesday, the 21st of October 2020 at 10am, and has been streamed live to the council's website. It will be available to view for a minimum of six months. Please be aware that any footage from the meeting may be used in subsequent media broadcasts. I am councillor Katie Corrigan, Chair of the Council. I would like to extend a warm welcome to members, officers, members of the public and the media who are watching this live stream. Before I commence with the formal business on the agenda, I would like to cover the housekeeping issues for us all to follow. For those participating in the meeting, if you could please only speak when invited to speak by myself as Chair. Keep your microphone on mute at all times unless invited to speak. If you wish to speak, please type RTS in the chat function. This will indicate to me that you wish to speak. Please bear in mind that all participants can see the messages in the chat function. Once invited to speak, please introduce yourself with your name and position, unless you have already introduced yourself earlier in the meeting. If you are having issues with connectivity, try switching off your video and using just the audio function. If connectivity issues continue, you may have to leave the meeting and re-join to get a better signal. Please follow these simple rules as it will help us in the running of the meeting as effectively and efficiently as possible. I will be pausing briefly when questions and comments are being invited to allow members to register their intention to speak. As I have mentioned, it is our first remote meeting of the full council, so please be patient should we encounter any issues. Thank you. Also, just to mention, we also have James Etherington, Deputy Morning Officer, with us today. Moving on to the formal business of the agenda. Item one, minutes. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the minutes of the meeting held on the 26th of February 2020, please?
Can I move the minutes, please, Chair?
Can I have a seconder?
Second the minutes, Chairman.
Thank you. Does the council agree the minutes as a correct record?
Agreed.
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 Can I confirm therefore that the minutes agreed as a correct record? Item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest in relation to any items of business on the agenda? I will pause for a moment to allow in declarations. There are no declarations. Item three, chairs announcements. The coronavirus pandemic is without doubt one of the biggest challenges many of us have faced in our lifetimes, and times are difficult indeed. I would like to express my condolences to all who have lost loved ones and been impacted by COVID. It is truly inspirational and testament to the people of County Durham, the way in which communities, local groups, organisations, charities and businesses across the county have responded to the pandemic. Teams of volunteers have responded in a whole host of ways, from making and delivering meals on wheels, to collecting prescriptions, walking dogs, delivering shopping and running food banks. I would like to place on record my sincere thanks to all of our communities for their amazing efforts. I would also like to place on record my thanks to our chief executive, the corporate management team and all our staff, and especially our frontline workers for their hard work. I would also like to make a special mention to those working in the NHS and care sector. We are also grateful and very proud of you all. It gives me great pleasure to announce that nearly £14,500 has been raised through a range of efforts and activities during my term of office. This will be split between my two chosen charities, A2K County Durham and Cheesy Waffles Project. I would like to place on record my sincere thanks to everyone who has made a donation or held a fundraising activity to support my chosen charities. I have been completely overwhelmed by the generosity of individuals who have not only given their money but also their support and time to help me achieve this fantastic goal. I'd like to express my gratitude to Durham Rotary Club, Swimathon, Durham City Freeman and parish councils across the county who have made some of the largest donations. You will also be aware that due to the coronavirus pandemic, we have not held our annual meeting this year, and I have continued in my role as Chair of the council. I have now started raising money for the chosen charity of the Vice-Chairman, councillor Ozzy Johnson, the Firefighters Charity. I would also like to place on record our congratulations to all those people from County Durham who were acknowledged in the Queen's Birthday Honors List, published earlier this month. This year's list also includes those who have contributed and continue to contribute to the huge voluntary effort in response to COVID-19. It will come as no surprise that recipients from County Durham featured predominantly whilst also recognising those who have worked tirelessly for our local community. Congratulations to you all. Finally, members will note that we have a full agenda of business to consider in today's meeting. Therefore, to allow extra time with it being a remote meeting for the voting requirements, I am asking the council to waive standing orders 4.2, 8 and 10.7 of the council's procedure rules. This will extend the time allowed for the length of the meeting in the event that proceedings take longer than two and a half hours, and also the time allowed for consideration of motions in the event that proceedings take longer than 30 minutes. Do I have a seconder, please?
I, as Ozzy Johnson, Vice-Chair of Durham County Council, second the motion.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to agree this course of action?
Agreed. Agreed. Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. That moves us on to item four, leaders' report. Can I ask the lead of the council, councillor Simon Hennig, to present his report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The past six months have been incredibly challenging for all of us, and I would like to extend my thoughts to all those who have been directly affected by coronavirus. I would also like to thank staff across the council for their ongoing hard work and commitment during the pandemic, keeping services operating and providing vital support to our residents. Many staff members have taken on different roles or re-trained in order to help out with a large number supporting the County Durham Together Community Hub. And I would also like to thank all key workers across County Durham for their amazing efforts over the last number of months. Our teams have also been working hard to support the business community with more than £104 million having been paid to more than nine and a half thousand businesses across County Durham through the government's business support grants and the local discretionary grants. I would also like to acknowledge the considerable efforts of our communities over the past few months in helping each other, and in particular, our most vulnerable residents. Community and voluntary groups have played a huge part in the combined response to the pandemic, and I am sure you will all share my enormous gratitude. As you will be aware, County Durham is currently in tier two of the government's system of coronavirus restrictions, along with the Tees Valley and the other members of the LA seven, which are Gateshead, Newcastle, Northumberland, North and South Tyneside and Sunderland. The fact that we were able to remain in tier two last week following discussions with the government is very much down to the efforts of our residents, businesses and communities in following the rules and guidance. These combined efforts have helped the number of coronavirus cases to stabilise, but we remain at a very critical point, and it is essential that everyone continues to do their bit in order to avoid the introduction of harsher restrictions. We continue to engage with government about the need for crucial economic support as well as localised control of test and trace, and we're committed to ongoing constructive dialogue. We have also joined with councils across the North East to write to the government to call for a financial settlement that allows us to continue responding to the coronavirus pandemic while also ensuring we are able to maintain the key services that residents rely on. The letter I sent as Chair of the Association of North East Councils seeks assurance that resources will be made available in the local government financial settlement as local authorities consider their budgets for 2021/22. Chair, I will continue to circulate a weekly update each Friday, bringing members as well as other stakeholders across County Durham up to date with the latest position on coronavirus. As I'm sure everyone is aware, the council's Chief Executive Terry Collins has announced his planned retirement towards the end of this year after a successful 40-plus-year career in local government. During his five years as Chief Executive, Terry has expanded the council's Culture Ed regeneration programme and in turn increased our national reputation as a great place to invest and visit, boosting the county's economy, including welcoming the millionth visitor to Lumiere in November 2019 on its 10th anniversary. He is also leading the council through its response to the COVID pandemic. The All-Party Chief Officer Appointments Committee agreed to appoint an interim chief executive from among the current corporate management team, and we will meet to do this at the end of this week. In other news, last night saw the first of our AAP Autumn Events Better For Everyone, at which people are able to have their say on the future of their area, and Durrant Valley hosted the first event, albeit this was held virtually. Over the next few weeks, there will be a meeting for each of the 14 area action partnerships, at which people will be asked for their views and suggestions, particularly on our £20 million plans to make towns and villages across the county more vibrant, one of the key priorities of the County Durham vision, which was agreed following a major consultation exercise last year. The events also include an update on the coronavirus pandemic from Amanda Healy, our Director of Public Health, and details of how residents can play their part in reducing the spread of the coronavirus by becoming community champions. The ongoing and outstanding community response to coronavirus will also be recognised at each session, which aims to provide an opportunity to give thanks to the many groups and individuals who have played such a tremendous role in their community response over the past six months. As part of our £31 million investment in frontline services over the next two years, we have employed 11 new neighbourhood wardens across County Durham to help keep enviro crimes like fly tipping and antisocial behaviour under control. This is part of our commitment to enhancing the services we know that residents value and which are important in maintaining communities as clean and green places to live, in which people feel safe and protected. Attracting investment to create and safeguard jobs is a key priority. In August, we welcomed news that Morrison's is opening a new store at Dalton Park, creating 150 jobs. We have also worked closely with both Dalton Park and Morrison's to ensure they're able to meet the timescales for the store. Following the opening of a new railway station at Horden in the summer, plans have also been approved to replace Durham Bus Station with a modern and spacious new building, with work set to start soon. This investment will improve transport links, regenerate North Road in Durham and increase footfall in the city centre. We've been awarded £750,000 to fund projects that will have an immediate impact in Bishop Auckland. We've been awarded seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds to fund projects that will have an immediate impact in Bishop Auckland and help build a stronger and more resilient local economy. The grant was part of an advanced allocation from the government's Towns Fund to help us maximise opportunities for local people and businesses by spending on projects that will immediately make a difference to the area. In September, we announced that regeneration plans for the former Festival Walk Shopping Centre at Spennymoor will get underway this month. We have put six hundred thousand pounds towards the redevelopment of the site, which will include a new car park, a new oldie store and additional retail space. Work also began to enhance Seum's rich heritage through the two point two five million Seum Townscape Heritage Project. We secured a one point six million grant from the National Lottery Heritage Fund towards the works which will breathe fresh life into Seum's historic town centre and focus on the regeneration of targeted properties in the church streets area. Plans for a new history centre showcasing County Durham's rich heritage have been approved, paving the way for Mount Oswald Manor House near Durham City to be redeveloped into a vibrant and interactive local history hub, bringing together archive, heritage and registration services as a central location. We've also recently been announced that we are to receive almost one point five million from the European Regional Development Fund to include a number of environmentally friendly measures during the restoration of the Grade Two listed building. The grant will allow us to install photovoltaic panels, a smart heating and cooling system and a ground source heat pump that could meet almost ninety per cent of the building's heating demand and sixty per cent of its cooling demand. We've completed a five point five million infrastructure works at junction sixty-one of the A one M at Bowburn to significantly improve access to the Integra sixty-one development, which is primed for a key role in our economic recovery from the pandemic. And we've improved walking and cycling infrastructure in and around Durham City following almost four hundred thousand pound of funding from the government's Emergency Active Travel Fund. We're also making improvements to a popular national cycle route thanks to a grant of almost a million pounds from the Department for Transport to improve a twenty-three mile stretch of the National Cycle Route One at South Hetton and between Coldhesaldon and Dordon. As well as launching a recruitment campaign to help speed up the training and recruitment process for care providers at this critical time, County Durham Care Academy secured a grant from the Workforce Development Fund to help care providers upskill their staff. In August, we commissioned Hartlepool and East Durham Mind to deliver a free training hub to help raise the standard of mental health support for employees across County Durham and raise awareness of mental health issues in the workplace. Schools and pupils have faced unprecedented challenges this year and I would like to reiterate the praise we gave following A-level and GCSE results this summer. Despite the difficulties presented by the pandemic, A-levels remained in line with last year and GCSEs saw improvements in key areas, including maths and English. Well done to all of our students and teachers. Chair, before I conclude with forthcoming events, members will have seen that earlier this week I asked chief officers to look into all possible options for appeal of a National Valuation Office Agency decision that council tax not be backdated on buildings converted into homes near Durham. As soon as we were aware of a potential breach in regulations this summer, council offices investigated the matter. However, while there have been historical breaches of planning and building control regulation which date back to the time of the former Durham City Council, the current council was unable to take enforcement action due to the amount of time that had elapsed. I have asked that all options to appeal this decision be considered. Furthermore, I believe it is imperative that the Valuation Office Agency be made accountable for its decision in Parliament so that public confidence in the council tax is maintained. So coming up, our preparations for winter are now well underway with our teams fully up and running. Our seventy-six-strong fleet of gritters and snow blowers is ready and waiting on standby and we have forty-two thousand tonnes of salt ready to tackle the ice and snow. More than two thousand three hundred salt bins are located across the county to assist residents and businesses and will be restocked as needed. An annual festival celebrating the unique history of Bishop Auckland will return bigger and better this year by holding its festival in partnership with a neighbouring area. Bishop Auckland Heritage Action Zone has teamed up with the Stockton and Darlington Railway Heritage Action Zone to bring the History and Heritage Festival twenty twenty. Running from Friday the twenty-third of October to Sunday the first of November, the festival celebrates the wider history of the North East with a programme of around fifty events that will bring to life the rich heritage of Bishop Auckland's and the birthplace of the railway. We're currently finalising our plans for Remembrance Day on Sunday the eighth of November. As a result of the pandemic, this year's events will be different from usual, but we will still be taking time to mark the occasion in a number of ways. This will include a series of outdoor experiences and digital events, providing everyone with the opportunity to pay their respects safely. Thank you, Chair. That completes my reports.
Thank you. If members have any questions on the report, can you indicate in the chat function? We have councillor Watson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just in respect of the Leader's Report, when he talked about all towns will receive financial assistance, I wonder if he could elaborate a little bit more on that and how will it be administered if it is financial support?
Councillor Hennig, do you like to respond?
Chair, I think, I'm not sure exactly the part of my report councillor Watson was referring to. If he was referring to what I talked about with the area action partnership meetings, that refers to the twenty million pots for towns and villages and for regeneration and making our towns and villages more vibrant. And as I mentioned before, all of those fourteen AAP meetings and everyone who attends will be asked for their suggestions on what that can be spent on. And indeed, yesterday at Durand Valley, there were a large number of suggestions just from that one AAP area. I have to say, right across the Durand Valley in terms of suggestions because it is about our villages as well as towns. So, so including all of our communities. So that gives an opportunity to everybody to put forward their ideas and I will be attending, as will senior officers, all of those meetings over the next three to four weeks. All of that feedback will also go to the AAP, as I understand it, to each AAP board meeting as well. And it will also come as feedback early in the new year, once it's collated, back to the council's cabinet in terms of then determining the way forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Shuttles?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have just a couple of points quickly. Firstly, Terry Collins' retirement. Terry has been open and transparent and accessible and I do wish him well and I think we all would, would. And another point, all of our staff have done a tremendous job and I think we all owe a board of thanks for what they've done during this period. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hobgood?
Thank you.
I think you are muted. You are muted at the moment.
Right, is that working now? Because it-
It is, yes.
Right, sorry, Chair. I'd also like to thank the council staff and all the officers and also the councillors because without fail, almost every councillor has worked within their communities over the last few months. Can I ask the Leader a question relating to the towns and villages money? And the consultation is great at the moment, but will you be taking forward the ideas and the projects that had already been submitted over two years ago when this fund was first launched?
Councillor Hennig, do you like to respond?
I, I, I'm confident that my, my view is we should take everything forward in terms of all the suggestions that have been made. So obviously I don't know exactly what you're referring to, but certainly my view and obviously working in conjunction with councillor Marshall as Cabinet Minister, as Cabinet Member, is that we should take forward all of the schemes that have been put forward. So if, if schemes have indeed been put forward previous to, obviously to the consultation, then certainly I would agree that those need to be taken forward as well. My guess is that the current consultation, certainly on the basis of last night's evidence, will probably reinforce some of the schemes that have already been put forward because we, we had a very wide range of schemes put forward last night and I think we'll have, you know, a number of ideas being put forward from the public. But certainly, yes, I, I think that all of those schemes that have already been put forward should be put forward as well as part of that process.
Thank you. Don't have any more requests? So can I confirm that the council notes the Leader's Report?
Agreed.
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 Agreed. Agreed.
Thank you. That moves on to item five, Questions From The Public. No public questions have been submitted for today's meeting. Item six, Petitions From The Public. No petitions have been received. Item seven, Report From The Cabinet. Can I ask the Lead of the Council, Councilman Simon Hennig, to present his report, please?
Thank you, Chair. This bumper Cabinet Report covers meetings held in March, June, July and September of this year as we have dealt with the challenges of the coronavirus pandemic. A large number of items have been considered during this period and these are detailed on pages thirty-two to sixty-nine of the papers in front of members this morning. I'm very happy to table this report.
Thank you. No questions have been submitted. Can I confirm the council notes the Cabinet Report?
Agreed.
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 Agreed. Agreed.
Agreed. Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. That moves on to item eight, Decisions Taken Under Urgency Powers. Can I invite John Hewitt, Corporate Director of Resources, to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. This report sets out the urgent decisions that have been taken in the absence of council meetings which were suspended because of coronavirus and the lockdown arrangements that were put in place earlier this year. The report summarises in Table One the decisions taken by myself and the Corporate Director of Neighborhoods and Climate Change, Alan Patrickson. The decisions in the report are dispensations for attendance at meetings, suspension of Hackney carriage licensing policy as set out on page seventy-three of the report, an amendment to the officer's scheme of delegation in relation to planning applications and the introduction of remote meeting rules. The decisions are summarised in Table One of the report and the recommendations are for council to note the report, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on the report? If so, can you please indicate in the chat function? No indications have been received. Thank you. Can I confirm therefore that the report is noted?
Agreed.
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 Thank you. That moves on to item nine, County Durham Plan Adoption. Can I invite Stuart Timmies, Head of Development and Housing, to present the report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. The purpose of this report is to seek council's approval for the adoption of the County Durham Plan, including the Policies Map following an independent examination by the Planning Inspector appointed by the Secretary of State. All planning authorities have a statutory requirement to prepare and maintain an up-to-date development plan and the plan that you've got before you seeks to ensure that County Durham is a successful place to live, work, invest and visit, focusing on supporting and creating vibrant communities. The specific policies in the plan, as you well know, includes over three hundred hectares of employment land distributed across the county, twenty, approximately twenty-five thousand new homes, again, distributed in accordance to the plan's Sustainable Community Strategy and the removal of greenbelt land at Snipely Park, Sherman Road and the former police skid pan at Akeley Heads. Other policies include a flexible approach to support our town centres and links to the council's work on improving our towns and villages, supporting rural communities to meet their needs in terms of housing and employment and enhancing and protecting the natural environment as we move forward and the challenges and impacts on climate change. There's been four rounds of consultation reflecting the required stages of the plan process, including issues and options, preferred options, pre-submission and latterly, on the main modifications that have been put forward. Cabinet approved pre-submission under, sorry, regular cabinet approvals in, in relation to the consultation. So Cabinet and indeed full council have seen the plan on a regular basis. County Durham Plan was subsequently submitted on the twenty-eighth of June twenty nineteen to the government and public hearings took place between the twenty-second of October and the fifth of December twenty nineteen, where all of the issues that were being put forward through consultation were discussed. In February, the inspector wrote to the council to state that following the hearings, he had concluded that the plan was likely to be capable of being found sound, subject to a number of main modifications. Alongside the main modifications, a number of additional modifications have been put forward that do not materially change the plan and are generally just minor clarifications in nature. Alongside of that, there have been changes to the policy map to reflect the changes that have taken place. This was subject to consultation yet again between the twenty-sixth of May and twenty-first of July this year, of which five hundred and three comments were received. The inspector has now reviewed those comments and published his report and we received that on the twenty-first of September. The inspector has now concluded the County Durham Plan is sound, subject to the main modifications in the plan being made prior to adoption. On the fourteenth of October, Cabinet agreed to recommend council agree those recommendations as set out in the plan and that's what we present here today. So just to note, work on the minerals and waste policies allocations documents will, will commence as, hopefully soon after this meeting and, and that is in line with the local development scheme. In regard to the modifications that are being put forward, that there are contained within the appendices of this report and, and set out. The, the main highlights of those are the deletion of proposed northern western relief roads around Durham City. Also the deletion of the corridor of interest for future relief road at Barnet Castle. Again, there are many, many other changes in terms of clarification and changes that help the plan move forward in terms of, of development in, in many respects. I think the most interesting one is increasing the proportion of accessible and adaptable homes from ten per cent up to sixty-six per cent, which really are there to help the needs of older people and people with disabilities on all future developments. In terms of adoption, section twenty-three of the Planning Compulsory Act states that if a planning inspector finds a local plan sound, subject to main modifications, then the local planning authority can adopt that plan. The council is not permitted to adopt the plan without these modifications. So on adoption, the plan will replace the previous seven local plans and also a number of other plans associated with those, including mineral plans, waste plans, et cetera. And again, they are itemised in the report. So having an up-to-date adopted local plan promotes sustainable development. It will aid the county's recovery from coronavirus and provide relative certainty to businesses and communities to facilitate appropriate development. As importantly, it will help resist inappropriate development that we, we sometimes get faced with within the planning regime. Members will be aware that the government has recently published a white paper. The nature of a white paper, this, this is- is currently in consultation, and any result in legislation could take some time to come into force. Therefore, there is no reason to delay the adoption of the current local plan as it stands. In terms of the plan and indeed the examination, the sustainability appraisal was a vital part of that, along with the habitats regulations assessments. These were both considered at examination and robustly challenged and reviewed and seen as sound. Also, when exercising its functions, the council has a duty under section one four nine of the Equality Act twenty ten to have due regard to the need to eliminate discrimination, harassment, victimisation, and any other conduct that is prohibited under the Equality Act. It's there also to advance equality and opportunities between persons who share a relevant protected characteristic and persons who do not share it. It's also to foster good relationships between persons who share relevant protected characteristics. An equality impact assessment has been undertaken to inform the plan as it has progressed. The impact assessment was reviewed and updated throughout the process, and no negative impacts on equality have been identified through this assessment, which indicates that the plan is likely to have a positive impact across all protected groups. All relevant stakeholders have been consulted, and where possible, their comments used to shape the plan and ensure the council meets its public sector equality duty. The plan has been developed, consulted on and independently examined in accordance with relevant legislation, and having due regard to all relevant factors. It is not considered that any issues have been identified which would prevent the adoption of the plan from a quality's perspective. The next steps, if subject to adoption, are also identified in the plan. The plan, if adopted today, will come into force immediately. Therefore, I refer members to the recommendations as set out in the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a move over to the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'm councillor Carl Marshall, the county council's cabinet lead for economic regeneration. Chair, could I just start by thanking Stuart and the team who've been working on this document for some considerable time? You'll see from the size and the scale and the content of it, they've done a tremendous job. The county plan's a plan for the whole of County Durham. It's a plan that seeks to ensure that each and every one of our residents has the best opportunities in life in terms of getting a job, getting on the housing market, and living in a great place with real choices. It builds on the council's proven track record of attracting investment, including a pipeline of investment and projects estimate that a staggering three point one billion, with the thousands of jobs this will create. Create more and better jobs, raise an ambition and attract further investment into County Durham and the wider north east region. Although we are here to consider adopting the plan, we've seen over the past five years many of the sites already coming forward, delivering the much-needed homes and the jobs in the most sustainable locations right across the whole of our county. Chair, whilst we've seen changes made to the plan at every stage of this process, and again by the inspector, the strategy is unaltered and has been accepted as robust in taking the county forward. It delivers housing that people need where it's needed. It helps us to address the cause of climate change and adapt to its effects. It identifies infrastructure to support new development and relieve congestion and improve air quality. It protects our important landscapes and natural and historic environment. It allows the right businesses and housing to meet the needs of our rural communities, and it sets out a restriction on takeaways in our town centres and close to our schools. Work on the plan began back in two thousand and sixteen and has involved extensive consultation, as has been outlined by Stuart, involving residents, businesses, stakeholders from right across the county and beyond. Whilst it's important to take on board everybody's individual opinions, I believe we have a plan which represents the vast majority of views put forward and the best interests of our communities. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody who's contributed to the process, from residents to members and stakeholders. They've certainly helped to shape the plan as a result. Having an up-to-date adopted local plan will help us through recovery from the current pandemic, providing the framework and direction to attract investment, drive job creation and support our communities. It will also provide the basis of meeting our climate change objectives, ensuring that development is delivered in the most sustainable locations and delivers on reducing the carbon footprint of the county. Chair, it has at times been a difficult and challenging journey, and one which I am pleased to say we've delivered a plan which will continue to take the county of Durham forward in terms of ambition and in terms of meeting the need and enhancing the environment. I'm therefore happy to propose the full council adopts the County Durham Plan and agrees to the recommendations as outlined in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a second to the report, please?
It's on you, Chair. I'm councillor Kevin Shaw, cabinet portfolio holder for strategic housing and assets. The County Durham Plan demonstrates the benefits of having a clear strategy which can deliver positive outcomes for our communities. By working alongside our partners, the plan presents a great opportunity to ensure the right type and mix of housing is delivered to meet current and future needs. As a portfolio holder for housing, I am particularly delighted to see the alignment of the housing strategy and the rail increases we'll see in terms of affordable housing. And that, an amazing sixty-six percent of all housing will be suitable for our elderly and people who may have a disability. And all of the housing we build will be a better mix to suit both needs and aspiration, and which we'll be proud of in terms of size, design and open space. And also alongside this, all development pairs its weight, thereby ensuring we get the right infrastructure, including education and health contributions for our communities. The plan is a key document in ensuring a positive future for County Durham. I'm very happy to second the recommendation.
Does anyone wish to speak on the report? If so, can you please indicate in the chat function? Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to join councillor Marshall in thanking Stuart Timmies and all the planning policy officers who have worked out on this over many, many years, most of my career at Durham County Council, I think. Four years ago about this time, I was sitting with the then-inspector Harold Stephens at Chestley Street, and we didn't get very far with him, did we? We had to take him to judicial review. And a year ago, I was sitting with the inspector William Fieldhouse at the Glebe Centre, hoping that, given that the council had now answered a lot of questions about deliverability of relief roads, there wouldn't be too much objection. Unfortunately, he came with an inbuilt anti-road bias, and subsequently it seemed an attitude of, well, your traffic problems can't hold a candle to those of London. What are you complaining about? And so he deleted the two Durham City relief roads for which there was money available, and he deleted the Barnet Castle corridor of interest, which was simply designed to keep a possible route open for a relief road for possible development in the future. I don't think anyone expected that he would allow the building of seventeen hundred houses at Snipely Park and four hundred and twenty at Shermond Road without new roads. Now, I accept that our officers have put in some mitigations to the lack of new relief roads in Durham City at Criterion K, but in our view, the house building without new roads will inevitably lead to a significant impact in the quality of life for residents in that area and all those who travel into the city from the west and from the south. So there's much in this report to be commended. There's some things I would like to have seen more emphasis on. We've always said we would like to see more emphasis on development of the whole county rather than a Durham city-centric approach. I particularly welcome the provision of appropriate housing.
You have one minute remaining, councillor.
For elderly people. But I'm afraid we do strongly object to the power that's been vested in the inspector to make these changes, which I'm afraid to us does make the plan something that we can't support. So it's with regret I say I can't support the plan today. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Chair. So, and as other members have pointed out, that the county plan is more than just planning policy. It's a map to gaining economic prosperity for the next thirty years in County Durham, and where that will be directed to. You build a house, you put people in it, they have money in their pockets, and they spend it in the local area. It's even better than tourism, because those new residents are always there to spend in local bars, restaurants and businesses. That's why I can't support this plan. It throws so much resource at Durham City, leaving the rest of the county behind. You know, if we look at the infrastructure proposals, they're attached to this plan and where they're directed to. If you live in Chestley Street, there's going to be around a hundred and thirty pounds per person that we're going to spend on infrastructure. While in Durham City, you're going to get two thousand five hundred pounds per person, and that's sort of where the county plan was going to throw its infrastructure money at it. And the pattern is similar across the county. It's around a hundred and seventy pounds in concert, two hundred and forty pounds in CM, ten times more investment aimed at Durham than the rest of the county on average. The tagline for this local authority is altogether better, but yet the theme of this county plan is throw all the investment at Durham, ignoring everyone else while overdeveloping a beautiful medieval city. There isn't even a redistribution of wealth argument here, because the money is all being spent in an area that generally has a lower rate of poverty in the rest of the county. Time and time again, the executive of this council point to southern councils that get extra government funding. We look at London and all the millions upon millions of pounds they get in infrastructure to boost their economy. The governing political group is making the same mistake, investing in the capital, making the claim it'll help everybody, rather than producing a plan that genuinely spreads out growth meaningful everywhere.
You have one minute remaining, councillor.
Rather than spreading out the growth, meaning we can all move forward together. The county plan fails at being fair. It fails at directing resources to those that are most in need or the poorest in our area. It fails at direct long-term benefits for the people I represent in North Lodge and Chestley Street, and that's why I cannot back this plan and will be voting against it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Wilkes?
Good morning, colleagues. County councillor Mark Wilkes, Farnwell Gates and Newton Hall Division. This being the first council meeting since lockdown, can I thank council staff, fellow councillors and all frontline workers and the public in County Durham for everything they have done and are doing to keep each other safe through these difficult times? Colleagues, it seems like another lifetime, quite honestly, since the last time since we started on the county plan process. Over the course of a decade, this Labour run authority has wasted hundreds of thousands of pounds by failing to listen to the general public, seeing the first county plan fall flat on its face and the second get slammed by the inspector. Some observations: Durham City isn't the only place in County Durham, so why this council perpetually believes that everything must be based here is beyond me. This county plan quite clearly fails to address the inequalities, poverty and need for jobs and investment across huge parts of this county, and for that, I am unimpressed. Overdevelopment to the west of Durham City without any guarantees that we will see proper infrastructure improvements is completely unacceptable to me and to the vast majority of the public. The building on hundreds of acres of greenbelt leaves many residents shocked, angry and upset. The huge amount of work done by ourselves and residents across Durham City area to batter down some of the craziness in this plan has, to an extent, been successful. We've saved some of the greenbelt from Labour councillors trying to destroy it. We've secured twenty-five hectares of parkland in the Snipely Greenbelt development. We've protected ancient woodland, the Weir Valley and Views of the World Heritage area, and we now have a commitment to more homes for our aging population than Labour politicians originally planned for. But because this plan fails to address climate change issues, fails to protect all the greenbelt, and fails on dealing with the serious problems relating to infrastructure in our area, I won't be supporting it today. I will, however, continue to push for a sustainable, carbon-neutral future for our county and for investment not just in Durham City, but in the rest of the county too, because without that, County Durham will never prosper. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Shields? You are moved, councillor?
My apologies. Councillor Alan Shield, representing the Leadgate and Melanthy Division. I share some of the concerns which have already been echoed regarding the plan being focused on Durham City, the centricity of that, but more so that the development, particularly in the Durham Valley and concerts, promotes the view held by many residents that we're going to become nothing more than a commuter belt with little or no employment opportunities. But a further concern regarding the County Durham Plan is that the perception is that it's a one-size-fits-all approach. And yes, it does supersede all the previous local saved plans, but that in other areas, there has been the development of neighbourhood plans to supplement the overarching County Durham Plan. Unfortunately, in this particular locality, we don't have many neighbourhood plans, so we're going to be governed by the County Durham Plan and solely. So the question I have is, what support will be provided by Durham County Council offices if there is a need under request to develop local neighbourhood plans? Because there is a cost and a resource prohibition in getting this done, and it's unfair that in other areas, they've had that opportunity, whilst in this locality, we haven't. Chair, I'll listen to the views of some of the other councillors before making my decision whether to support this proposal or not. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Hobgood?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My colleague councillor Wilkes has said much of what I would like to say was regarding our area. It was the one area in the county that would have been affected the most with the loss of greenbelt in terms of both relief roads would have come into our area, but we still have a significant loss with the Snipely Park development. My concerns relate to the figures that have been put in this report, and I already know that the development that's proposed at Shermond Road, whilst in the report says it's four hundred and twenty houses on the greenbelt, there is applications in for more. I know that the Snipely Park development is seventeen hundred. It is likely that they're going to want to put many more in. And without the infrastructure, local infrastructure, not relief roads, which I welcome those being taken out by the inspector, this is unsustainable for the communities that we represent. I agree with what's being said about this being focused on Durham City. This is something that all the leaders of the North Councils are talking about at the moment with respect to everything being focused on London. And here we are doing exactly the same in our county by trying to focus everything on one area at the expense of the other areas. It's not fair. It's not fair to the people who live here to have their lives affected in the way that this will affect them, and it's not fair to the people in the outlying areas across the county that aren't seeing something come into their area. Now, I appreciate that we have to have a plan. It's been a huge problem for many years that we don't have an up-to-date plan. But a bad plan is no better than no plan. And we need, we need to look at what we can do to address the issues around the greenbelt, around climate change, thank you, Chair, and around making fairness for the whole of County Durham. This is the county council. It needs to be fair for everybody. Thank you.
Councillor Tindley?
Thank you, Chair. For us attends the Wellington and Homewood Division. Yeah, this is a very important day. Today, we get the opportunity to adopt a development plan for County Durham. It's our plan, the people of County Durham's plan, and it's a plan written by the people of County Durham for County Durham. I do thank everybody involved in that process. It means that, for want of a better word, we can take back control of the strategy that will define all decisions on planning applications in this county for the next fifteen years and beyond. We can reduce our reliance on national planning policy written three hundred miles away in London, which is often very little relevance to the challenges we face in County Durham. Coming back to councillor Bell's point, yes, it's taken too long. Coming back to councillor Bell's point, yes, it's taken too long to do that, to get to this point. But you must remember, with the first iteration of the plan, we saw the judicial review and we, our decision to do that was upheld. While it is a good day, and I'll be voting in favour of the motion, its recommendation, it is not without some degree of regret due to a number of the inspector's modifications. Any development plan such as this is only proven when it moves to the implementation stage and is a direct impact on people's day-to-day lives, people we represent. The removal of the Durham city northern and western relief roads from the plan by the inspector is a regret. Those roads have been a priority for this council for decades. For those who must continue to suffer traffic congestion travelling into Durham city for work or education, they may wonder why the plan is, what the plan has done for them. For those seeking to level up development across the county in the rural west and former mining towns, areas like where I represent, this is a setback. For those seeking to develop tourism and improve the environment in places like Barnet Castle, where I know local members and indeed the local MP have campaigned for the safeguarded corridor for the bypass to reduce pollution and congestion in the High Street, its removal is also a setback. While it's taken time to reach this stage, what is enabled is the opportunity for a comprehensive public engagement across the county. All views have been had regard to. While the outcome may not be exactly what you want, you've had the opportunity to be involved. This is democracy in action.
You have one minute remaining councillor.
Finally, I hope this plan does not represent a high watermark in terms of public engagement in the planning process in County Durham. Many of you will be aware that the government are currently consulting on a white paper which proposes fundamental changes to the planning system. Without significant alteration, we stand on the brink of a brave new world in planning. The opportunity for community engagement and development management process like we have seen in the preparation of this plan will be significantly curtailed. Public participation reduced, local transparent decision-making by elected representatives effectively deleted in many instances. On balance and not without some regret, because of the inspector's modifications, I will still be supporting the motion to adopt the plan. Why? To be left without the plan will be disaster. We cannot allow that to happen. That would be the result of rejecting this plan as proposed by a number of the members speaking performing today. We will be letting our residents down. This will be wrong and we should not do that. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Patterson?
Thank you Chair. Good morning everyone. I'm councillor Andy Patterson, the cabinet member for corporate services and rural issues. Chairman, I'd like to reiterate some of the points I made last week at cabinet in that it is extremely disappointing that the relief roads will not be going ahead. I mentioned last week how road connections and developing infrastructure were crucial for our rural communities if we're going to help them grow and prosper in the future. But the inspector has ruled that the relief roads are not necessary. So now we'll look to connect our rural communities in other ways. What I am really pleased about is that the plan takes account of the rurality of our county and of course that's important. And we now have to work with our local partners and people in the communities, ensure that we get the very best for those rural communities. Chairman, as a local member, I'm more than aware there'll be different views in communities and we can't please everyone. And there'll be minor elements of the plan that members are not in favour of, particularly if it's not popular with some of the residents. But this is a countywide plan and it's a strategic plan for the future of County Durham. And it's a plan that builds on the economic ambitions for more and better jobs across this county. Something that's going to be greatly needed as we come through this current coronavirus pandemic. And for me, there's two key issues that I mentioned back at cabinet. One is that the plan offers flexibility to adapt and change according to local needs and that is important. And the second is that it's extremely important that we do have an agreed plan in place for the county to avoid any unwanted developments taking place. And Chair Stuart Timas mentioned about the government's white paper and that's nothing short of outrageous. What's being proposed by governments would potentially see planning laws relaxed, democracy crushed and local residents could even raise the right to object to planning applications. I don't want to see that happen. So it's particularly important Chair that we have this county plan in place and I'll be working very closely with councillor Marshall, ensure the voice of our rural communities is heard and that we maximise the opportunities that the plan provides as we go forward. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Clare?
Thank you. I've just got two short points to make in relation to particular responsibilities I have on the council. I thoroughly approve of what councillor Marshall and councillor Patterson and Tinsley say. However, I'll just add the following. The first one is that I would point out to members who may be trying to criticise this on climate grounds that the plan, the inspector accepted unscathed the section of the plan which dealt with climate. I would also point out that this is particularly important now because the decision to not go ahead with the relief roads gives us a real problem about emissions and pollution in Durham city from traffic. So it's essential that those climate aspects were maintained. The second thing is just as Chair of South West Planning, anybody who is in planning, who is considering voting against this plan, goodness knows where you've been for the last sort of seven years. Because we've been absolutely overrun without any real powers to stop anything. And this plan will, as councillor Tinsley says, give us back a degree of control over planning issues which is essential and it is the height of a responsibility to be taking away that control, that degree of control on the basis of past grudges. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Sexton?
Hi, yeah, thank you Chair. Councillor Paul Sexton, Chesley Street South. I'd just like to thank the officers and everybody involved with the plan. Clearly a lot of hard work has gone into this and a lot of it I do agree with. There's one niggling point for me which has already been mooted and I find it very Durham-centric. When I was first elected, I did ask executives what the future plan was because it wasn't clear as well nor we've been working on that for many, many years. And it was a vision of Durham city and effectively wealth and prosperity cascading from the city itself. I don't believe that works. And for that reason, at the moment, unless I hear something different, I don't think I can support. I need to stand up for people in my town and Chesley Street who've seen our High Street just disappear completely and very little help being given to us. So that's my point of view anyway. Thank you very much Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Temple?
Thank you Chair. Councillor Owen Temple from Concert. I'll be very brief Chair. I think my colleagues have spoken extremely well on both sides of the argument. But as any local member, I have to represent the area that I live in and whose voters I represent. And we're only too well aware that there is only one strategic economic site in this county, in this plan, and that is at Akeley Heads. Ever since I've been on the council and I'm coming up towards thirteen years now, the obsession that the economy of County Durham should be based around the development of a single site at Akeley Heads has seemed to me absurd. And so despite whatever other advantages there may be in this plan, I will not be able to vote for it. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Shuttles?
Yeah, thank you Chairman. I mean, I'm not going to go over what I said at cabinet last week, but there's clearly uncertainty across the country and across the world right now. And right now maybe this isn't the right time to do this. We do need a plan, I accept that. But you know, if you live in Shotten or St John's Chapel or Fairyhill or anywhere like that, you might as well live on the moon. It should have all been spread right across the county. So there's development and whatever people want across the county, not just Durham. It's all about Durham. That can't be right. And I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else wishing to speak? No. Therefore I'll hand over to councillor Marshall for his right to reply.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I want to thank all of the members for the comments, whether I agree with them or not. Planning is, is very subjective at times and anyone who's served on a planning committee, you'll see that and it's down to views and opinions. But I do have to dispel some of the myths that, that we've heard some of the members talk about this morning. The fact that, that there's sort of insinuation that this is a Durham-centric plan is absolutely categorically untrue. If anybody reads the document, which I think crashed most of our IT systems this week in any detail, you'll see a very firm evidence base there behind some of the housing allocations in particular, where only fourteen percent of the housing that's proposed in the plan for the whole county is in Durham city. With, you know, nineteen hundred houses in North Durham, over three, three thousand houses in Concert, nearly four thousand in Mid Durham, three thousand eight hundred in South Durham and six thousand, six hundred in South East Durham. East Durham with over four thousand houses and West Durham at over a thousand. You know, the twenty-five thousand houses in there, including the ones we've already given permission for sure, the housing. We're not just trying to build housing in Durham city. In fact, it's the absolute opposite with eighty-five percent of the new homes proposed in this plan going outside of Durham city, across our communities around the county. I also want to pick up strongly and rebuff some of the issues that have been raised around only wanting to create jobs in Durham city. And we have a number of key strategic sites which we've been working on, which are referenced, which Stuart Timas referenced right across every corner of the county. The work that's going on in Integra, where we have a huge allocation of jobs on there, work underway. Forest Park with sixteen million pounds worth of infrastructure and the thousands of jobs on there. The work at Jade, the work at Net Park. Chair could go on and on. We have other developments creating jobs in every corner of this county based on the way that this Labour-led authority have worked alongside private developers to bring forward that.
You have one minute remaining councillor.
Thanks Chair. I just want to, just to sum up by saying it's very easy to cast holes and make, make things on the hoof. This plan's been through robust consultation, including a government inspector who has found everything in the plan to be sound with the mitigations and the amendments he's put forward. We've reconsulted on them. It makes no surprise to me that the Lib Dems and the Tories who brought in austerity on top of what's happened with the pandemic have caused issues for residents in every corner of this county. It's up to us as a Labour-led authority, Chair, to be blunt, to try and create some opportunity and some ambition from our residents right across the county. And I hope members of the council support the plan so we can continue with the excellent work that we've been doing in spite of austerity over the past ten years. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. If I could just urge councillors to write RTS as soon as I can, just so that they're not missed, missed off. But next time I will wait a bit longer. I'll, I'll pause a bit longer so that we don't miss anybody. I'll now hand over to James Etherington who will explain the voting procedure.
Thank you Chair and good morning members. The voting on this item will take place by way of a roll call. I will announce each councillor's name in turn in alphabetical order. And I will ask each councillor to indicate whether they are for the resolutions, against the resolutions, or whether they wish to abstain. I'll leave a period of time after saying each councillor's name so that they can unmute their microphones and indicate their vote. If councillors do not get the opportunity to vote, I will go back at the end of the roll call to check whether anybody has missed out. Councillor Adam?
For the proposal.
Councillor Alan?
For the proposal.
Councillor Jay Atkinson?
I'm in favour of the proposal.
Councillor P Atkinson?
For the proposal.
Councillor Avery?
Against the proposal.
Councillor A Benbridge?
Abstain.
Councillor B Benbridge?
Abstain please. Abstain.
Thank you councillor. Councillor B?
For the proposal.
Councillor A Bell?
For the proposal.
Councillor D Bell?
For the proposal.
Councillor E Bell?
For.
Councillor J Bell?
For.
Councillor R Bell?
Abstain.
Councillor Bennett? Councillor Blakey?
Abstain.
With an abstention.
Councillor Boyd?
For the proposal.
Councillor Boys?
For the proposal.
Councillor Brooks?
For the proposal.
Councillor D Brown?
Abstain.
Councillor J Brown?
For the proposal.
Councillor L Brown?
Abstain.
Councillor J Carr? Councillor Chaplow? Councillor Charlton?
Against the proposal.
Councillor Clare?
For the proposal.
Councillor J Clark?
For the proposal.
Councillor M Clark?
For the proposal.
Councillor Corrigan?
For the proposal.
Councillor Colt?
Abstain.
Councillor Creathorne?
For the proposal.
Councillor Crute?
For.
Councillor Davinson?
It's Davinson. For.
Councillor Durham?
For the proposal.
Councillor Durham? Councillor Freeman?
Abstain.
Councillor Gardner? Councillor Geldard? Councillor Gunn?
For.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Hanson?
For the proposal.
Councillor Henderson?
Abstain.
Councillor Henig?
For.
Councillor Higgins?
For the proposal.
Councillor Hobgood?
Abstain.
Councillor Hopper?
For the proposal.
Councillor Hovels?
For the proposal.
Councillor Hugo?
Abstain.
Councillor E Huntington? Councillor G Huntington?
Against.
Councillor Jew?
For.
Councillor Johnson?
For.
Councillor Jobbling?
Against the proposal.
Councillor K?
For.
For.
Hello?
Hello? Councillor Callitt?
You are?
For.
Councillor Kennedy?
For.
Councillor Lang?
For the proposal.
Councillor Lethbridge?
For.
Councillor K Little?
Abstain.
Councillor H Little?
For the proposal.
Councillor Madison?
Abstain.
Councillor Madeland?
For the proposal.
Councillor Makepeace?
Against this proposal.
Against this proposal.
Councillor Manchester?
For the proposal.
Councillor C Marshall?
For the proposal.
Councillor L Marshall? Councillor Martin? Councillor E Marvin?
Abstain.
Councillor L Marvin? Councillor McDonald?
Against the proposal.
Councillor McIan?
For the proposal.
Councillor McLean? Councillor Milburn?
For.
Councillor Morrison?
Support the proposal.
Councillor Nebbia?
For.
Councillor Nicholson?
Against.
Councillor O'Meara? Councillor Patterson?
For.
Councillor Potts?
For the proposal.
Councillor Panda?
For.
Councillor Quinn?
For the proposal.
Councillor Reed?
Abstain.
Councillor J Robinson?
For.
Councillor Rollinson? Councillor Savery?
Abstain.
Councillor Scott? Councillor Sexton? Councillor Shaw?
For the proposal.
Councillor Shields? Councillor Shillwood? Councillor Simmons?
Abstain.
Councillor H Smith?
For the proposal.
Councillor T Smith?
For the proposal.
Councillor Stevens?
For the proposal.
Councillor Stevenson?
For the proposal.
Councillor Stoker? Councillor Sertes?
For the proposal.
Councillor Taylor?
For the proposal. Let's get our county yet moving Chair.
Councillor Temple?
Against. For the proposal.
Sorry, Councillor Temple? Councillor Thompson?
Against.
Councillor Tinsley?
For the proposal.
Councillor Tucker?
For the proposal.
Councillor Turnbull?
For the proposal.
Councillor Watson?
Against.
Councillor Wilkes?
Abstain.
Councillor Willis? Councillor C Wilson?
For the proposal.
Councillor M Wilson?
For the proposal.
Councillor S Wilson?
Proposal. For the proposal.
Thank you. Councillor Wood?
For the proposal.
Councillor York?
For the proposal.
Councillor Z?
Against.
Thank you. Is there anybody whose vote I haven't registered?
Councillor Constantine. She stepped out of the way.
I'm aware the councillors, Constantine stepped out. Is there any others who wish to indicate their votes?
I assumed a female voice when I tried to vote. I'm not quite sure what happened there. It's councillor Charlie K. Did you get me down as voting for?
Yes councillor.
Thank you.
Can I just check and recall councillor Chaplow?
I'm voting for.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Eunice Huntington?
For.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Constantine?
Thank you for.
Councillor Richardson?
Abstaining.
Thank you councillor. We'll just tally the scores up now.
You're muted. We will just suspend the broadcast while we count the votes up. Thank you.
Chair, that's 68 for, 15 against and 24 abstentions.
Thank you. Therefore carried. That moves us on to item 10, council plan 2020 to 2023. Can I invite the corporate director of resources to present the report please?
Yeah, thank you Chair. This report sets out the council plan for 2022-2023 and the plan itself is attached to the report at appendix three. The plan is the council's contribution towards achieving the objectives that are set out in the wider County Durham vision, which includes the vision for all our partners and stakeholders, and also sets out the council's own change proposals over the medium term. The plan also brings together the council's medium term financial plan framework and sets out how priorities will be resourced over the coming years. The plan is structured around three ambitions. They are more and better jobs, people living long and independent lives, and connected and sustainable communities. There is also a fourth ambition of an excellent council, which underpins all the other three ambitions that are set out in the plan. The plan also sets out how the council will lead the COVID-19 response and recovery, and how this will be aligned to the wider ambitions that are set out in the plan. Council is asked to approve the council plan set out in the report Chair. Thank you.
Can I have a move to the report please?
Thank you Chair. Chair, the council plan is an important document which covers the years 2020 to 2023. And as with the County Durham vision, the plan is structured around three ambitions. More and better jobs, people live long and independent lives, and communities well-connected and supportive of each other. With a fourth ambition, an excellent council. The plan itself looks in detail at each of those ambitions, which includes, if you look at the report that is behind it, delivery plans and key programmes of work that lie behind each of those overall ambitions. The plan also includes the context of our approach to the COVID pandemic, our response, restoration and recovery. The recommendations are set out in paragraph six and I'm very happy to move the reports.
Can I have a second to the report please?
Thank you Chairman. Morning everyone. I'm Alan Napier. I'm the Deputy Leader of the Council. I also hold the finance portfolio within the Cabinet. Chairman, as we enter what are undoubtedly going to be very difficult times for our local communities and businesses, it is important that we have a plan that reflects our wider partnership vision, but which focuses on what the council will do over the coming years to improve the lives of people in County Durham. The plan has been updated to reflect the response and recovery work related to coronavirus. However, our ambitions remain true to what we have always believed in as a Labour-run council. Working hard to ensure that there are more and better paid jobs, helping people to live long and independent lives, and ensuring our communities are supported and supportive of each other. There are many priorities that sit behind our ambitions, such as ensuring the best educators available for our young people, that opportunities for learning exist for everyone who wants to learn, working hard to reduce and remove poverty and improving prosperity for everyone. The challenge that lies ahead is enormous. I do hope that government understand the vital role that this council has to play in leading our communities and businesses out of the coronavirus crisis. Chairman, this is an excellent plan and I'm happy to second the recommendations.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on the report? If so, can you please indicate in the chat function? I will pause briefly while I wait for any requests. Thank you. Can we agree the report and its recommendations? Thank you. Item 11, Treasury Management Outturn 2019 to 2020. Can I invite the corporate director of resources to present the report please?
Yeah, thank you Chair. This report sets out the council's treasury management position for last financial year. So this is 2019-20 financial year. And in line with the treasury management strategy, we do report treasury management performance to full council regularly during the financial year. This report sets out details of council borrowing, which was £359 million at 31st of March 2020. And the report also sets out the borrowing that's been undertaken in the year, which totals £40 million through PWLB and pre-agreed borrowing of £20 million that was also undertaken during the financial year, taking advantage of the low interest rates at that time. Investment activity is set out from paragraph 23 and the report sets out £232 million worth of investments, which are broken down in paragraph 24 of the report. The other important part of this report is the treasury management indicators that are set by council when we agree treasury management policy and strategy. And this report confirms to council that they have been complied with as set out from paragraph 26 for last financial year. And I can also inform council that we were within the potential debt indicators that were set by council when the policy was agreed. Chair, council is asked to note the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on the report? If so, can you indicate using the chat function? Councillor Wilkes?
Chair, I just wondered if the officer could clarify for us. Paragraph three on page 733 of the report, the loan from Phoenix Life was a significantly higher rate than the public work loan board rates. So would you be could clarify the reasoning for this decision? Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, thank you Chair. So that decision in terms of the pre-agreed borrowing was taken out at a previous point in time, taking account of the interest rates that were in place at that time, and taking guidance from our treasury management advisers about the future direction of interest rates. So interest rates have subsequently come down. However, more recently PWLB rates have increased because of the premium attached by the PWLB board. So it effectively relates to a previous decision that was taken into account of the interest rates that were in place at that time.
Thank you Chair.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll briefly pause if you'd like to write in the chat function. I don't have anybody else. Therefore can I confirm that the council notes the report?
Agreed.
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 Thank you. Item twelve, motions on notice. Before we commence with the next item, I would like to hand over to James Etherington, Deputy Warrant Officer, who will explain the procedure.
Thank you, Chair. The usual rules of debate applies to the, to the next two motions. Members have the opportunity to ask questions at the outset of the, of the motioner. The mover of the motion has five minutes to speak. The second and any other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on each motion, except for the mover of the motion, who will have the right to reply. If there are any amendments that are moved and seconded, the debate moves to a debate on that amendment. Everybody will be entitled to speak once again, except for the mover of the original motion, who has the right of reply. The mover of an amendment does not have a right of reply. If the amendment is accepted, it becomes the substantive motion, and the debate will resume on that basis. If an amendment falls, then the debate moves back to the original motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Wilkes?
Do I have a point answer to this one?
Thank you, Chair. I believe all members will have had a chance to, to view the motion. And this motion is related to fairness in regards to taxation. And all that this motion asks is that we achieve fairness within County Durham, within the taxation system. Across County Durham, we have areas with town and parish councils and areas which are unparished. In unparished areas, Durham County Council provides all of the services. In parished areas, the council provides significant services, whilst town and parish councils make a major contribution to their communities. This disparity means that people living in areas with parish and town councils pay for their own town or parish council services, and then pay for the services in unparished areas too. There are clear issues of unfairness here. Whilst we would all accept that parish and town councils offer additional benefits to their communities, the discrepancy in the taxation system means that people across the county are paying as much as three hundred pounds a year more for a band D property in parished areas compared to unparished areas. When the new Unity Authority was set up in two thousand and eight, commitment was given that we would make sure that this disparity was addressed. Durham County Council accepted that there was a problem and paid a nominal amount to various town and parish councils. But this amount did not represent a true calculation of the additional amount being paid by people in parished areas for double taxation services. To make matters worse, the County Council subsequently scrapped this double taxation rebate. The issue has not been addressed since and is unacceptable for us to continue in this manner. This is why I'm asking today that we review the situation, and in doing so, look at the services offered in unparished areas and compare them to those offered in parished areas, and analyse what each parish council is offering. This process can be exceptionally simple. We would simply look at what parishes are offering and what we as a council offer in unparished areas, and the standard that we offer those services at. We would then be able to calculate the double taxation amount and come to a decision as a council as to what we propose to do about it. To not do so would be undemocratic and unfair. In carrying out a review, there are a huge number of additional benefits which we will be able to secure. By working closely with our town and parish councils to look at what they are doing and the work that we are doing there, there is the potential to reduce costs on all sides. This can include helping reduce carbon emissions and sharing best practice. So, in the interest of making sure that we keep the level of council tax down and protect services offered to our residents, I urge councillors to support this motion so we can move forward in a spirit of cooperation with our town and parish councils and make sure that all the services in all the areas are offered in the best and most efficient manner possible, whilst at the same time addressing the clear unfairness currently present. Please support fairness by supporting this motion. Thank you, Chair.
Do you have a second, Chair?
Yes, I second that much. Chair, Councilman Harry Hunter and Sheldon Dean volley.
Do you reserve the right to speak now or you speak in the debate?
I'll speak now, Chair. Well, Chair, can I, first of all, draw the members' attention? This issue, going back to the setting up of the single unitary authority, it was recognised by most people who were involved in this that it would throw up a lot of anomalies and problems, which proved to be right. One of those being double or treble taxation. I'd like to give you an example. I was a member of Sedgefield Borough Council at the time. I believe I'm right in saying Sedgefield Borough was totally made up of town and parish councils. I think it was hundred per cent, but I'm not absolutely certain. But also, it had the largest amount of cameras, security cameras, for which they owned, the Borough Council owned, maintained and erected and policed. And the local town and parish councils were happy to pay an annual fee for that service. Now, obviously, when we went over to the unitary authorities, the town and parishes continued to pay the county council this fee, annual fee, when if you were lucky enough to live in places like Chesterley Street or Crook or places like that, the liability fell onto the county council precept, of which the town people of, of Sedgefield Borough were paying as well. So hence double and treble taxation. I would ask members to consider a place like I represent, Shildon. Shildon people know about this. They also know that they pay the second, I think it's the first or second highest D band council tax in Britain, have probably some of the lowest wages, et cetera, et cetera. How can we look them straight in the eye and tell them that we're a fair and decent council when this anomaly and this unfairness exists? As the mover has pointed out, this is unfair, it is an injustice, and it has been going on too long. I ask members, not in a matter of party politics, this is a matter of right and wrong, this is a matter of fairness. And I don't for one minute say it's a simple thing to do. It'll need some work doing on it because towns and parishes vary.
You have one minute remaining, councillor.
Towns and parishes vary in size and complexity. But I know that the county has the expertise to work out a system of fairness for everybody. And this system, this situation will not go away, Chair. It'll be running sore for years to come unless we grasp the nettle now. And I'm asking members in fairness to support the motion. I second it, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Napier?
Thank you, Chairman. I speak this morning in opposition to the motion standing in the name of councillor Wilkes. Chairman, this matter was addressed in the council chamber in December two thousand and twelve, following consultation with the County Durham Association of Local Councils. This is not an issue that the local council's working group has asked to discuss with the council. We have provided substantial and ongoing financial support to all of our town and parish councils. We agreed in two thousand and twelve to pass on an element of the local council tax reduction scheme grant to town and parish councils. In total, we have passed over thirteen point four million pounds over the last eight years. We are one of a small number of councils that made these payments. In making the decision to pay these grant payments, I'd remind members that the council withdrew the legacy double taxation payments in agreement with the County Durham Association of Local Councils, not what councillor Wilkes said that we'd scrapped it. The payments previously being made went to a small number of town and parish councils, which totaled two hundred and forty five thousand pound per annum, and were based on services that have been devolved to them pre-local government reorganisation, and which continued post-LGR up to March two thousand and thirteen. Had we continued to make the double taxation payments as opposed to passing on the council tax grant, town and parish councils would have received around eleven point four million pounds less grant than they have received over the last eight years. If we were to consider undertaking the exercise that councillor Wilkes is proposing, we would inevitably have to review our position on these payments or else face widening the financial gap in our medium term financial plan. I would remind members that the latest forecast reported a cabinet last week so that around forty three million pounds of additional savings are required over the next four years, and it could be worse than that. I am also very concerned about the timing of this work at this time, when our offices are fully committed to dealing with coronavirus, not to mention the work in engaging with over a hundred town and parish councils. This would be a significant resource commitment and take many months to undertake. I would question whether this is a priority at this time for all the reasons I have explained. In summary, Chairman, I cannot support the motion put forward. I do however want to highlight that our commitment to supporting and working in partnership with local town and parish councils is absolute. We truly value the tremendous work that they do across their communities. We will work closely with Seadalk and the local council working group on any issues they raise through the excellent relationships that in all councillor Stevens has with them. Chairman, for the reasons set out and the unintended consequences I have outlined, I urge members, members not to support this motion. Let us focus our resources on working together during this pandemic, which is what our local communities would expect. I urge members to pause.
Thank you. Councillor Bell?
Thanks, Chair. I support the motion. I think if you read it carefully, nobody's asking for an immediate cheque to be written. It's asking for a study to be done and a report to be brought forward with a view to identifying how much rebate could be returned. It may well be the case that Cabinet decided not to return that rebate, but at least we would know what it is. The world has changed significantly since two thousand and twelve, when that decision was made. It's only a few years ago that the county council went out to town and parish councils, asking them to take services and areas off their hands essentially. So local towns and parishes are doing more and more, and it's time that these things were reviewed. I would also note, it's surely very timely. We're going out to consultation, as the leader has said, on how to spend the town and villages reserve, which I think is heading towards twenty million, a chunky sum of money. Surely, if you're looking at projects to be done at local areas, you've got to also at the same time look at what's already going on in local areas by way of a lot of things, things like maintenance of green spaces, enhancements to make places look more attractive, et cetera, et cetera. So I would say it's very timely that this review happened now. And it's actually, you'll get a lot of synergy by doing it at the same time as looking at the town and villages reserve. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Clare?
Thank you. This is in the election strategy, of course. It's been put in front of the town councils of places, particularly in the south of the county, where the Lib Dems regard Labour as vulnerable. And of course, it does play well to the electorate because there is an element of unfairness in double taxation. And Great Acliff, this is being touted by the Lib Dem candidate as a campaign which will reduce people's council tax. Actually, if we were to restore the rebate, which is one of the ways it could be addressed, it would save band the taxpayers in Great Acliff Town Council ten p a week. And we need to distinguish if we're talking about the, the burden of double taxation between the total cost of a town council and the cost of duplicated services. A second way you could deal with double taxation would be for DCC simply to offer to take over all those functions. And this has been offered to the TPCs and was refused. And why? Because they do not just offer a duplicate service. Town councils provide additionality. They're very proud of that additionality, and they believe that they offer a better, more bespoke service to their residents. That's why they charge the council tax and the extra council tax to do these things. This motion implicitly devalues and demeans the work that they are doing to offer improved services. It's an insult to the town and parish councils. And finally, of course, the other way would be to find a legal way to charge unparished areas a surcharge. And I'm sure that colleagues in unparished areas might want to say something about that. The people of Crook chose not to have a parish council precisely because they do not want to pay a parish council tax, and that was their right. We in this chamber have a responsibility to all residents of the county. And we need to bear in mind the wishes of residents in unparished areas. Thank you, as well as those in parished areas. And I question the Lib Dems coming here in their role as town councillors to push their town council agendas and not looking at the whole thing. Sort of, this might be an issue which we need to address, but this is not the forum, and the Durham County Council is not the body to take that forward. It's properly the province's Seadalk, as councillor Napier has actually said. And if Seadalk want to bring it forward, then it is the responsibility of the county council to respond to that. And on those three grounds, we need to oppose this electioneering motion. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Thompson?
Chair, I, I support the motion. When it came to our town council, I moved an amendment to include reviewing the local council tax reduction scheme as well. And that amendment was passed. I know councillor Napier has mentioned about how the government grant has been passed on to town councils. But my town of Spennymower has had their council tax base reduced by eleven hundred pounds, eleven hundred units. We have not received any grants for two years. That council tax reduction on the, on the council base is equivalent to two hundred and forty thousand pound a year. We are the only council now in the North East that still goes along with the initial two thousand and twelve introduction of the local council tax reduction scheme. Other councils have changed it, reduced it in various ways. I do support a review of the, the, the double taxation. We used to get it. The town councils are there, they exist. I know councillor Clare says they shouldn't be brought up at this meeting, but I, I don't agree with that. So, Chair, I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hobgood?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This motion was originally put in to come to March's meeting. And as we know, we haven't had a meeting since then. And part of that motion, and I want to address councillor Napier's concern about taking this forward because of the timing and officers' time restrictions. And for that reason, the final line had a time scale on it, which we have removed, which Mark has removed to put forward, because we acknowledge that officers have got lots to deal with at the moment, with COVID, with the pandemic, with just day-to-day operations. But what this is asking for is that the council considers doing this report, and that it takes this report and it looks at it the future, that it doesn't just ignore these issues that many residents across the county are facing. So that's what, that's what it's asking for. It's asking for it to be considered. It doesn't have a time scale on. And, but it's asking the council, and I would ask people to support that, please.
Thank you. Councillor Tinsley?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to come back on one of the comments that councillor Thompson made. He said that in his town council, which I understand is Spennymower, he, he proposed the changes to this and also review of the council tax reduction scheme. I'd just like to, to remind members that we're one of the few councils that still keep the council tax reduction scheme for some of our most vulnerable residents. Particularly at this time, when many of our residents are feeling, feeling real difficulty because of COVID. Many people don't know what's going to happen with the end of the furlough scheme. And to propose a review of that at this time, I'm, I'm actually quite shocked about that. But just, just sum up for me the issue of timing, and this is not the right time to do this. So I think this is something that possibly for the future, but not now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on the motion? I'll pause for a few moments to let anybody.
Yes, Chairman. Councillor Brian Stephens, portfolio holder for Neighbourhoods and Partnerships. Chairman, this is not the forum to talk about the association of parish councils and town councils. It is their business to come to see us, to make sure that we're doing the right and proper thing as they see it, and as we also see it as the county council, from a financial point of view. And of course, towns and parish councils have the right to precept to make sure that they are doing the best they possibly can with extra funds that they precept for to enhance their towns and parishes. And of course, councillor Huntington has already said, you know, you've got to look people in the eye. Well, he looked people in the eye at Shildon when he was putting up the council tax when he was leader, Chairman. So from my perspective, this is not a matter for us. This is a matter when the town and parish councils come forward and present that case to us through the right and proper procedures, then we will take it back and have a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is no one else registered in the chat function? So I'll go back to councillor Wilkes for the right to reply.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Napier continues to pretty much...
Councillor Napier continues to pretty much ignore this issue, and he's conflating the local council tax reduction scheme with it. Labour councillors clearly think it's fair to tax people in places like Shildon and Newton Acliff and other towns hundreds of pounds more. So we'll see what the electorate thinks about that next year, won't we? Councillor Bell makes a good point on synergies with the AAP consultation. We could start this process now. And whilst accepting the situation we are in, we haven't set timescales in this motion, as my colleague councillor Hopgood has said, because we recognise the issues that we're facing at the moment. This issue is not going to go away. And for councillor Clare, he should stop misleading his residents with his 10p comments because we haven't done any analysis yet of what the level of double taxation it is. And it is councillor Clare and his colleagues who want to continue taxing his residents higher than they should be being taxed. Councillor Stevens clearly just wants to pass the book because it's very clear to me that Labour councillors don't want to take on this issue, which is rather bizarre considering that it's many of the areas where their seats are that are being most affected by it. Now, at some point, this will have to be dealt with. It cannot continue like this. It is grossly unfair for people to be paying taxes for services in their own area and then having to pay them again. And in some cases, as councillor Huntington has suggested, you could almost class it as triple taxation. I would urge all councillors to support this because it's about fairness. Fairness, and let's stop overtaxing some people in this county in a way which is so grotesquely unfair that it is unsupportable. Please support the motion.
Thank you councillor. We will now move over to the vote.
Thank you Chair. We'll do a roll call as before. If you could indicate whether you're for the motion, against the motion, or whether you wish to abstain. Councillor Adams?
Against the motion.
Councillor Hallam?
Against.
Councillor J Atkinson?
Against.
Councillor P Atkinson?
Against.
Councillor Avery?
Against the motion. Did you get that all right?
Yes councillor, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I just ask all members to leave their microphones muted until I call their name please? Thank you. Councillor A Bainbridge?
For the motion.
Councillor B Bainbridge? Councillor B Bainbridge?
For the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Beatty?
Against the motion.
Councillor A Bell? Councillor A Bell? Councillor D Bell?
Against the motion.
Councillor E Bell?
Against.
Councillor J Bell?
Against.
Councillor R Bell?
For.
Councillor Blakey?
Against.
Councillor Boyd?
Against.
Councillor Boys?
Against the motion.
Councillor Brooks?
For the motion.
Councillor D Brown?
For the motion.
Councillor J Brown?
Against.
Councillor L Brown?
For.
Councillor Chablow?
Against.
Councillor Charlton? Councillor Charlton? Councillor Clare?
Against.
Councillor J Clark? Councillor M Clark?
Against.
Councillor Considine?
Against.
Councillor Corrigan?
Against.
Councillor Colt?
For.
Councillor Crethon?
Against.
Councillor Crute?
Against.
Councillor Davidson?
Against.
Councillor Dunn?
Against.
Councillor Durham? Councillor Freeman?
For.
Councillor Gunn?
Against.
Councillor Hall?
Against.
Councillor Hampson?
Against.
Councillor Henderson? Councillor Henderson?
I'm for.
Councillor Hennig?
Against.
Councillor Higgins?
Against.
Councillor Hopgood?
For.
Councillor Hopper?
Against.
Councillor Hovells?
Against.
Councillor Hugo?
For.
Councillor E Huntington?
Against.
Councillor G Huntington?
For.
Councillor Jewel?
Against.
Councillor Johnson?
Against.
Councillor Jopling? Councillor Jopling?
For the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Care?
Against.
Councillor Callett?
Against.
Councillor Kennedy?
Against.
Councillor Lang?
Against the motion.
Councillor Lethbridge?
Against.
Councillor Care Little?
For.
Councillor H Little?
For.
Councillor Madison?
For.
Councillor Maitland?
Against.
Councillor Makepeace?
For the motion.
Councillor Manchester?
Against the motion.
Councillor Seymour?
Against.
Councillor L Marshall?
Against.
Councillor Martin?
For.
Councillor E Marvin?
For.
Councillor L Marvin?
For.
Councillor McDonald?
For.
Councillor McKean?
Against.
Councillor McLean? Councillor Milburn?
Against.
Councillor Morrison?
Against.
Councillor Napier?
Against.
Councillor Nicholson?
For.
Councillor Quinn?
As a greater town council, I will be against this at this moment in time, as SEDOC will be seen to it. Thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Against.
Councillor Richardson?
For.
Councillor Robinson?
Councillor John Robinson is against.
Thank you. Councillor Rawlinson?
For the motion.
Councillor Savery?
For the motion.
Councillor Scott?
For.
Councillor Sexton?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
Against.
Councillor Shield?
For the motion.
Councillor Shuttworth?
For the motion.
Councillor Simmons?
For the motion.
Councillor H Smith?
Against.
Councillor T Smith?
Against.
Councillor Stevens?
Against.
Councillor Stevenson?
Against.
Councillor Stoker?
For.
Councillor Sertes?
Against.
Councillor Taylor?
Against.
Councillor Temple?
For.
Councillor Thompson?
For.
Councillor Tinsley?
Against.
Councillor Tucker? Councillor Tucker?
Sorry Chair, I'm having some buffering problems. Against.
Thank you. Councillor Turnbull?
Against. I think it's a matter for SEDOC to take up with the county council and not county councillors to take up on behalf of SEDOC.
Councillor Watson?
Against.
Councillor Wilkes?
For fairness and for the motion.
Councillor Willis? Councillor C Wilson?
Against.
Councillor M Wilson?
Against.
Councillor S Wilson?
Against.
Councillor Wood?
Against.
Councillor York?
Against.
Councillors there?
For. Excuse me Chair, my name wasn't called out for the roll call, but I'm in favour of the motion. Councillor Simpson?
Apologies councillor. Are there any other councillors whose names did not get called?
Can you come back to me please councillor Little?
Yes councillor.
I need to change my vote to record as against.
Okay, we can do that councillor. Yes, we can do that.
Apologies for that.
Is anybody else left needing to vote? Final call, anybody else? Councillor Hopgood, do you have a point of order?
Yes Chair, thank you. Can I just ask, with regards to the rules, are we allowed to change our vote once that's been done? And if so, where's that being stated? Because once the count's done in the chamber and the vote's gone through, then you can't change. So I just want clarity for moving forwards if that's something that can be done virtually.
I'll check with legal councillor.
Chair, if this was an electronic vote in the council chamber, members would have the opportunity to change their votes up until the period where the vote would close, as this is not a recorded vote and as the tallies have not been taken yet. I think it's entirely appropriate within the rules that a councillor can change their vote in this circumstance. Thank you Chair.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you Chair.
Chair, if we could just suspend the meeting whilst we hear your comments.
Yes, we'll suspend the broadcast now while we count up the votes. Thank you.
Chair, that's 36 in, 36 for and 68 against.
Okay, thank you. Therefore, the amendment falls. Motion falls. Okay, I now invite councillor Andrew Patson to move her motion please.
Thank you Chairman. Over the last 10 years, this council's faced unprecedented cuts to funding, and we've had to find savings of more than £240 million to balance our budget. We don't qualify for any rural services delivery grant, yet we still face the challenges of sparsity, remoteness and poor connectivity. And the fair funding review is now being delayed until 2022/23, which poses a major risk trial funding going forward. The Covid-19 crisis has had a profound impact on this council's staff, its services and its income, and above all, on our local communities. And at the start of the crisis, the Secretary of State for Communities and Local Government urged councils to do whatever was necessary to control the spread of the virus, and he promised to reimburse councils in full. This hasn't happened, so this motion seeks to ask the Secretary of State to honour his promise, campaign for fairer funding and to thank Durham County Council staff. Chairman, the Local Government Association estimates the financial gap facing the local government sector to be around £10 billion, while the Institute of Fiscal Studies, the spending review 2020, highlights the immense While seeing to it the fiscal studies, the spending review 2020 highlights the immense economic uncertainty associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. Stating that some councils are faced with making in-year budget cuts if government don't fully compensate them for their losses. Unison is also calling for a decent and fair settlement for local government in the forthcoming spending review and they've launched their campaign #10BillionBailout. We face major economic uncertainty and as new waves of the coronavirus rise, so too are the demands on our services. And we need to be resilient and unless local services are properly funded, we're at risk of failing our local communities. We can't stand by and let that happen. It's not acceptable for our communities we represent and it's not acceptable for our residents who are facing financial hardship. And it's certainly not acceptable for our staff who are already stretched. Chairman, throughout austerity, our staff have embraced change and adapted year after year. As we've been very prudent at this council in making savings, but this is nothing, nothing compared to the challenges we faced with COVID. And throughout this crisis, our staff have been absolutely incredible. Each and every one of them have gone above and beyond the call of duty and I would expect nothing else from our people in County Durham. Chairman, I would like to place on record my sincere thanks to all of the staff, from our young apprentices right through to the corporate directors and the chief executive. Who have worked incredibly hard, often long hours around the clock to keep services running for our residents. And I'd especially like to thank those staff who have worked on the frontline at the very heart of our communities we serve throughout this crisis. Whom without, we simply could not have functioned as a county. Chairman, these are staff who have not had a decent pay rise for years. These are staff who are facing financial hardship themselves. These are staff who have lost loved ones to COVID-19. And these are staff who no matter what we've asked of them, they're ready to step up to the challenge and we need to thank them. We need to thank them all for all of the hard work, for the dedication and all of the work they've done since this virus struck. Chairman, we continue to work very closely with our recognised trade unions. And I would also like to place my thanks on record for their support throughout this pandemic. In terms of our finances, we face with huge pressures and we are facing unprecedented times of uncertainty across the medium term. So if we don't get a proper and fair settlement, we're going to be facing extremely difficult decisions over the coming years. Thanks Chairman. I therefore call upon this council to write to the Secretary of State and ask him to honour his pledge to reimburse councils in full for financial losses as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. To join Unison, to campaign for a decent and fair settlement for local government in the forthcoming spending review. To sign up to the Unison campaign, back the #10BillionBailout for local services. And above all Chair, let's thank all of Durham County Council staff for their heroic efforts in the recent months. Many thanks Chairman.
Thank you. Do you have a second Dave?
Yes Chair, it's me Counselor Rob Crewe representing the Blackwall Ward. I'm also Chair of the Council's Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. I'm pleased to endorse Counselor Patterson's comments and formally second this motion. Because year after year in scrutiny, we've considered the council's better position and you made savings year after year to balance the budget. Local authorities up and down the country are working tirelessly to respond to this pandemic. And yet here we are again talking about uncertainty over what funding the council's likely to receive. That simply isn't acceptable and it can't continue. I think it's time now for the government to stop its failed austerity experiment and ensure local government receives the funding it so badly needs. As the Labour set out in his letter to the Secretary of State, the last thing we need to be spending time on now is deciding how to take more money out of our budgets. We need to be able to continue our work to help our local communities and businesses to get through this pandemic. I've heard many references to a fair settlement and to levelling up in the North East. Well, I think it's about time the government cut back on its empty rhetoric and started turning this promise into work reality. And ensure that this council receives its fair share of funding and to do it in a way that offers a degree of certainty to the council. And also holds out hope for the residents and the communities of this county. And if there are concerns about where this money comes from, it's simply a matter of priority, isn't it? Do we intend to stand by while the government continues to use austerity as an excuse to bleed our communities and public services dry? Do we allow the government to continue to centralise wealth and opportunity in London and the prosperous South? Do we stand by while this government continues to squander billions on a broken test and trace system, risking accusations at the line in the pockets of wealthy shareholders with public money? Or do we fight back and get the money into County Durham where it can be better used to benefit our residents and their communities? On which side I'm on Chair, I urge all like-minded members of the council to join me in supporting this motion. And I thank Counselor Patterson for taking the time to bring this motion to council today. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Do you have any wishing to speak on the motion? Counselor Bell.
Thanks Chair, yes, I would like to move an amendment to delete the second and third bullet points referring to the Unison campaigns. And I speak to that amendment as follows. I agree with much of what Counselor Patterson has said and we fully support writing to the Secretary of State. And asking for more money to make up the shortfall. My understanding is we have had £38.1 million thus far to supplement our council's core expenses. And we are short of £34.2 million in the current financial year. My understanding also is that another billion pounds was announced recently when the Prime Minister introduced the tiered system of regional controls. Though we have no information as to the distribution of that yet. And clearly, yes, we also fully support the hard work of our staff during this difficult period. And particularly noticeable to me has been the AAP staff and the finance staff who have been distributing the government relief money out to businesses etcetera, which I won't go into in detail. We don't support joining the Unison campaigns for three reasons. The unions have legitimate concerns, but we must remember that we represent the people of the county and we are the employers of those union members. It is simply not appropriate to sign up to a trade union campaign, particularly one that from the live link seems to be fairly open-ended and may well change as the time goes on. And then secondly, after the recent Greater Manchester negotiations problems, I'm not sure that megaphone diplomacy is the best way of getting Robert Jenrick to open his chequebook. I fully support the efforts of the leader writing on behalf of Aenech and the work he does through the County Council's network and the LGA etcetera. And I think that is the better way to approach these matters with central government. And I would also observe that as the council's funding gap is made up of lost income and also additional costs due to operating the COVID period. It's unwise, I think, to put a specific number on it. I note that Unison have picked £10 billion, not sure where that comes from. I'm not sure if that's the official Labour position. Steve Reid, the Shadow Secretary of State, said back in July, end of July, that the shortfall, he believed nationally was between £6 and £10 billion. So there's obviously gone for the larger figure. The first bullet.
Yeah, woman remaining Counselor.
The first bullet point I would suggest, writing to the Secretary of State, say is that all that needs to be said, we fully support the council in doing that. We fully support this motion in thanking our staff who have worked very well throughout difficult circumstances. But I move the deletion of the bullet points two and three regarding the Unison campaigns. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Do you have a second Dave?
Yes, it's Counselor Ted Hen- Henderson from Barn, Castle West. I would like to second the motion that Richard Bell has put forth. Thank you.
Do you reserve the right to speak?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. We now move on to speakers who would like to speak on the amendment. We have Counselor McCain.
Thank you Chair. I must say, I'm quite shocked at this amendment. When I was growing up, my grandparents told me stories about the miners' strike, about the people who tried to get them to turn on the people who were on their side. And through these stories, my grandparents taught me that if someone's fighting in your corner, you have to value them, you can't just insult them. And this is an insult to Unison. I like to think that regardless of party affiliation, all my colleagues are localists. We all value the work that councils do and we fight for services in our communities. And if Unison are prepared to go out to bat for us and demand the funding that will keep a high standard of service for the towns, villages and city that we all represent. I think the least that we can do is acknowledge their efforts. I'm a Unison member myself and I'm proud that my union cares as much about community as I do. After yesterday's spectacle in Greater Manchester, it's more than I can say about my government. So no, I will not be supporting this amendment and I call on all of the councillors to vote it down.
Counselor Shield.
Thank you Chair. I cannot support this motion in its current and complete form. This pandemic is the single greatest threat to our way of living since the Second World War. And it strips the financial collapse of 2009. The needs of the entire nation require collective cooperation from young to old, across the whole country. People do not want to hear the proliferation of political posturing from all sides on the political spectrum. I'm sure that I speak on behalf of all members that people want a cohesive and structured approach by centralised and local governments. To control, contain, reduce and prevent the spread of the virus. And God willing, an antidote will be developed as soon as possible to allow some semblance of normality to return. I support what has already been stated, that the reimbursement of financial losses, as stated by the Secretary of State, has to be honoured. And I think an extended appreciation and thanks to Durham County Council staff, many of them who've gone over and beyond their call of duty, needs to be acknowledged. But I cannot in all sincerity enlist the support to join the Unison Union, to ensure the compliance of fair settlement on the spending review and the £10 billion bailout. That is an individual choice, not a collective choice. And therefore, I will be supporting the amendment. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on the amendment? Yes, we have Counselor Sexton.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to touch on what others have just said. We're talking about, councillors are talking about doing this collectively and non-political. But bringing in the affiliation with Unison here, although it may be helpful, to me is unnecessary. We have elected members and as the councillor just before me has said, you know, we're more than capable of getting our point across. And if somebody wants to do that as an individual, then that's their right. I think Counselor Patterson's motion about thanking staff and writing to the Secretary of State is absolutely the right thing to do. And I would back that. I just can't support it with these Unison elements in, so I will be supporting the amendment also. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Simon Wilson.
Yeah. I think for me, where this is, is I will be voting against the amendment for the motion. The fact of the matter is, is we've seen yesterday exactly what this government does to people who stand up on their own when Greater Manchester have stood up. We need as many people as possible in this fight. We need as many different support mechanisms in this fight. And enlisting Unison, the biggest public sector trade union, we are doing that. We are also showing to our staff who have worked hard, worked tirelessly through this pandemic, that we are supporting them as well.
Thank you. Counselor Wilkes.
Thank you Chair. I fully support the motion. The amendment really needs to pass because if you go to the Unison website, a corporate entity can't sign the petition. And therefore, we'll actually be passing a motion here, which is not lawful. We, as a council, can't sign that petition. So I'll have to support the amendment, but I fully support Counselor Patterson in what she's trying to do in supporting staff and in trying to get the government to get the funding that we need in this county. And to honour the promise that they made. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor Shuttleworth.
Thank you Chair. I think everybody, if we were in the chamber, everybody in the chamber would support this if it didn't have the Unison element. So I would ask that Counselor Patterson removes those two points and I think you'll have 100% support.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Counselor McDonald.
Yes, I just wanted to make a point in that I wholeheartedly support Counselor Patterson's proposal to request additional funding from the government. However, using Unison with a government to, as a sort of a stick to beat with in support of the argument, is probably going to be going against us. Because we're talking about a government that is totally anti-trade union and using Unison for this request is probably the worst thing we can possibly do. So I will be, I'll be supporting the amendment.
Counselor Watson.
Yes Chair, I support the motion as such, but I do feel that the amendment is right. I don't believe that we need to sort of, to be supporting Unison or joining Unison. Because we are a council at the end of the day and we can sort of still deliver the message. Unison can support the council, that isn't a problem. So I fully support the motion, but I've got to support the amendment. It's right. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Tinsley.
Thank you Chair. I think it's, it's clear as members that we're obviously aware of the cuts and the difficulty we have in our finances. But it's also clear to our staff that there's a problem there. They're working with us on a day-to-day basis like we are. And Unison are the largest recognised trade union representing those workers who work for us. So I think it's absolutely right that we partner with their representative trade union and lobby the government for a better funding outcome. That's why I'll be voting against the amendment before this was standing motion. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to like to speak? Counselor Hobgood. Yeah, thanks Chair. Can I just reiterate and ask Counselor Patterson to reply, or it may be somebody from legal who has to reply. That if the amendment falls and it's passed, how do you implement the third bullet point? Because the website that you've got the live link to clearly says it is for an individual to sign up to. How can an organisation sign up to it? And also, is it right and feasible that an organisation can sign up to a live link that next week could be changed? And that would have Durham County Council's name attached to it? So in agreement with everyone else, I totally support the idea of the motion. I totally support the first, probably the second and the third point. But I don't know whether it is lawful that we can do the third point that you want us to do. Thank you Counselor. I'll check with legal.
Thank you Chair. I'm aware that the Monitoring Officer has already given advice on this point anyway, but I'm happy to reiterate it for the rest of the chamber. And the third bullet point asks council to sign up to a campaign, not necessarily sign up to a particular petition. The live link there is taken as for information purposes for members regarding the particular campaign that the council is being asked to back. That being the case, there's no issues with illegality. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I'll check one last time. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Chair, have I got a right to reply before the vote?
Yes, I'll bring you back in now Counselor.
Thank you Chair. Chair, it's no surprise that Counselor Bell and the Conservatives don't want to back the trade union campaign. These are the same Conservatives who have systematically oppressed workers' rights over the years, who have tried to crush the trade unions. And the very same Conservatives who have paused more than a decade with austerity cuts to this council. And I'm sure the Lib Dems don't need reminding about their role. And I'm sure the Lib Dems don't need reminding about their role, they're playing and imposing austerity either. Chair, we've got collective agreements in place with our trade unions and we work with our trade unions here in County Durham. The Unison campaign is about protecting our staff, it's about protecting our services and it's about protecting our communities and the very residents we represent. Local government face a £10 billion shortfall and that means funding for local services. That means refuse collections, it means children's services, it means adult social care and that's just a few of the services that we could be faced with making catastrophic cuts to if government don't find significant emergency funding for councils. Our residents rely on those essential services and they have done throughout this pandemic. So no, I do not accept that we should not be campaigning for fairer funding with Unison and no, I do not accept that we should not sign up to this campaign. Our communities deserve far better, they deserve the right to properly funded services and we need to unite with our trade unions on this campaign. Chair, I'd urge all members to vote against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move over to take a vote on the amendment.
Thank you Chair. Same procedure as previously, a roll call in alphabetical order. Just to reiterate, the question is whether the amendment proposed by councillor Bell be accepted. So I'll ask you to indicate whether you are for the amendment, against the amendment or whether you wish to abstain from the vote. Councillor Adam.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Allen.
Against.
Councillor J Atkinson.
Against.
Councillor P Atkinson.
Against.
Councillor Avery. Councillor A Benbridge.
For the amendment.
Councillor B Benbridge.
For the amendment.
Councillor Beatty.
Against the amendment.
Councillor A Bell. Councillor D Bell.
Against the amendment.
Councillor E Bell.
Against the amendment.
Councillor J Bell.
Against.
Councillor R Bell.
For.
Councillor Blakey.
Against.
Councillor Boyd.
Against.
Councillor Boyd.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Brooks.
Against the amendment.
Councillor D Brown.
For the amendment.
Councillor J Brown.
Against.
Councillor L Brown.
For.
Councillor Chutler. Councillor Charlton. Can I just ask all members to keep their microphones on mute please? Councillor Clare.
Against the amendment.
Councillor J Clark. Councillor M Clark.
Against.
Councillor Considine.
Against.
Councillor Corrigan.
Against.
Councillor Colt.
For the amendment.
Councillor Creathorne.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Crute.
Against.
Councillor Davinson.
Against.
Councillor Dunn.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Durham. Councillor Freeman.
For the amendment.
Councillor Gunn.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Hall.
Against.
Councillor Hampson.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Henderson.
For the amendment.
Councillor Henig.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Higgins.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Hobgood.
For.
Councillor Hopper.
Against.
Councillor Hovens.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Hugo.
There must be.
Councillor Hugo. Councillor E Huttington.
Against the amendment.
Councillor G Huttington.
For the amendment.
Councillor Jewell.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Johnson.
Against. I never got a case in this group, I'm just. No, I never got a.
Councillor Jopling.
For the amendment.
Councillor K.
Against.
Councillor Kellett.
Against.
Councillor Kennedy.
Against.
Councillor Lang.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Lethbridge.
Against.
Councillor K Little.
For.
Councillor H Little.
Against.
Councillor Madison.
For.
Councillor Maitland.
Against.
Councillor Makepeace.
For the amendment.
Councillor Manchester.
Against the amendment.
Councillor C Marshall.
Against.
Councillor L Marshall.
Against.
Councillor Martin.
For.
Councillor E Marvin. Councillor L Marvin. Councillor McDonald.
For.
Councillor McKean.
Against.
Councillor McLean. Councillor Milburn.
Against.
Councillor Morrison.
Against.
Councillor Nebbia.
Against.
Councillor Nicholson. Councillor Ormrod.
For.
Councillor Patterson.
Against.
Councillor Potts.
Against.
Councillor Panda.
Against.
Councillor Quinn.
Against.
Councillor Reed.
For the amendment.
Councillor Richardson.
For.
Councillor J Robinson.
Against.
Councillor Rawlinson.
For.
Is that four councillor?
Yes, four.
Thank you. Councillor Sarrow. Councillor Scott.
For.
Councillor Sexton.
For the amendment.
Councillor Shaw.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Shield.
For the amendment.
Councillor Shuttleworth.
For.
Councillor Simmons.
For the amendment.
Councillor Simpson.
For the amendment.
Councillor H Smith.
Against.
Councillor T Smith.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Stevens.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Stevenson.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Stoker.
For.
Councillor Sertes.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Taylor.
Against.
Councillor Temple.
For.
Councillor Thompson. Councillor Thompson. Councillor Tinsley.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Tucker. Councillor Tucker. Councillor Turnbull.
Against.
Councillor Watson.
For the amendment.
Councillor Wilkes.
For.
Councillor Willis. Councillor C Wilson.
Against.
Councillor M Wilson.
Against.
Councillor S Wilson.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Wood.
Against the amendment.
Councillor York.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Z. Councillor Z. Could I ask if any members had their name missed out, could they indicate now or if they weren't able to indicate their votes?
Chair, it's councillor Tucker. I lost connection. Against the amendment please.
Thank you councillor. Any others?
We'll now suspend the broadcast while we count up the votes. Thank you.
There's thirty-one in favour of the amendment and sixty-five against the amendment.
Thank you. Therefore, the amendment falls. We now revert back to the substantive motion. We have a few speakers who would like to speak on that. We'll start with councillor Considine. Thanks, Chair. It's Stu Considine for the Manchester Division. I just want to support councillor Patterson's motion and also to thank the staff who've been amazing through the pandemic, which is really appreciated by everyone. Our local communities and businesses need the council's help and support over the coming months and years, and it's vital that the government has given the resources that the local government, sorry, has given the resources that needs to invest in them. I thank you unison for their support and call in for this, and I urge members to support the motion. Thanks. Thank you. Councillor Gunn.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Alwyn Gunn, Cabinet Member for Children and Young People's Services. I'm very happy to support this motion in its full entirety. It's more than important than ever that this council and local government more generally has the resources it needs to provide the vital services our local communities and our businesses rely on. Members of this council will know that I've raised issues about school funding for years, and I'll continue to raise that at every opportunity until we have a fair settlement. Those of you who are members of school governing bodies will know that on three occasions since March, I've written to headteachers and thanked them and their staff for their resilience, their commitment, and their compassion in dealing with the many challenges of this pandemic, and I want to place that on record today. In addition, my thanks go to all staff in Children and Young People's Services. Children's Social Services were already battered by a succession of cuts, but now they have the extra demands brought on by this pandemic. And I know that our staff in Children and Young People's Services have gone that extra mile to protect and support children, young people, and their families. For me, this motion is as much about the long term as it is about the here and now, because local government has faced the brunt of austerity over the last ten years, and we've responded in a way that I doubt any other sector could by being innovative and creative. But you know, there comes a time when central government needs to acknowledge the extremely important role that local government has in working in partnership with our local communities and with our businesses. Local government is uniquely placed to lead the recovery from coronavirus, but we've got to have the resources to do it. In closing, Chair, the Prime Minister needs to put his levelling up agenda into action. It is time. It is time to level up, and we all need to support this motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Please use the chat function. You have councillor Bell.
Thanks, Chair. Despite our antipathy towards the second and third bullet points regarding the Unison campaigns, we will be supporting the motion. We do feel it's important to write to the Secretary of State. I understand that the Treasury has announced this morning we're just looking at a one-year settlement this year, not a three-year settlement. So the immediate priority is to fill in the hole caused by the additional Covid funding. And then, yes, I join with other members in wanting a fair funding review going forward that puts us in a stronger position. Also, fully endorse the sentiment of thanking our staff, whether it's the teachers, many teachers who work throughout, the people who empty our bins who have worked throughout, and all the officers working from home. The council has really been a rock of stability and good service during this time of Covid. So somewhat reluctantly, certainly on points two and three, but we will be supporting the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Councillor Hobgood.
Yeah, Chair, thank you. And I would like to reiterate that whilst I did support the amendment, I do support the motion in whole. Now, I think that it is really important that government does honour its commitment to what it said at the start. They told us that we had to do what was necessary, and we have. We've kept our side and done what was necessary for the residents of County Durham during this pandemic, and I think it's important now that they honour the commitment and give us the funding to carry on. I think our staff have been heroic throughout the whole pandemic. I work very closely with a number of schools, and I know headteachers and teachers who haven't had a day off since it started. And they are probably some of the unsung heroes of this pandemic because they've provided stability for children who've needed it. And also all of our frontline service staff and right up to the chief executive, who I know is about to leave, but who hasn't had a day off since the start either. And so I think it's important that we do acknowledge the staff and what they've done over the last few months and what's still yet to come. Because we're far from out the woods. We've got a long few months ahead, and we need to give them the support that they deserve. So I do support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Madison.
Yes, I do support the motion on this. I would like to thank all of the staff for the tremendous effort that they've made throughout this crisis. I think it is well deserved, our appreciation. But I also think that we should be recovering some of the expenses that have been incurred, and on that basis, I will support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sexton.
Yes, thanks, Chair. Yeah, now that the amendment has failed, as I said previously, the motion is itself right, and we need to thank the staff, and we need to hold the government to account in terms of the financial support we need in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll pause for a few seconds. Steve, is anybody else? Okay, there's nobody else. And I'll bring back in councillor Patterson for the right to reply.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I'll keep this short. I'm really pleased that members across the political spectrum this morning have joined me in recognising the commitment and the efforts of Durham County council staff, and that they join me in thanking those staff for their hard work throughout this crisis. And Chairman, I'm also really pleased that members recognise the risks to this council financially as we move forward, and that we need to ask government to live up to their promise and reimburse councils in full. And we are looking for sustainable settlements going forward from 2021, 22. And Chair, we are looking to government to commit to cover the costs in full as promised at the start of this pandemic. Because simply, Chair, we just don't know how long this pandemic is going to go on for into the future. Chairman, I urge everyone to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll hand over to Ethel to expand the voting procedure.
Thank you, Chair. And final fact today, this will be a roll call in alphabetical order. The vote is on the substantive motion of councillor Patterson. And I'll ask all members if they can indicate whether they are for the motion, whether they're against the motion, or whether they wish to abstain. Councillor Adam.
For the motion.
Councillor Allen.
For.
Councillor J Atkinson.
In favour of the motion.
Councillor P Atkinson.
For the motion.
Councillor Avery. Councillor A Bainbridge.
For the motion.
Councillor B Bainbridge.
For.
Councillor Beatty.
For the motion.
Councillor D Bell.
For the motion.
Councillor E Bell.
For the motion.
Councillor J Bell.
For.
Councillor R Bell.
For.
Councillor Blakely.
For the motion.
Councillor Boyd.
For the motion.
Councillor Boyce.
For the motion.
Councillor Brooks.
For the motion.
Councillor D Brown.
For.
Councillor J Brown.
For.
Councillor L Brown.
For.
Councillor Chapo. Councillor Charlton. Councillor Clare.
For the motion.
Councillor J Clark. Councillor M Clark.
For.
Councillor Considine.
For.
Councillor Corrigan.
For.
Councillor Colt.
For.
Councillor Crethon.
For.
Councillor Crute.
For.
Councillor Davison.
For.
Councillor Dunn.
For fairness, for the motion.
Councillor Durham. Councillor Freeman.
For.
Councillor Gunn.
For.
Councillor Hall.
For.
Councillor Hampson.
For.
Councillor Henderson.
For.
Councillor Hennig.
For.
Councillor Higgins.
For.
Councillor Hobgood.
For.
Councillor Hopper.
For.
Councillor Hobbles.
For.
Councillor Heagle. Councillor E Huntington.
For.
Councillor G Huntington.
For.
Councillor Jewell.
For.
Councillor Johnson.
For.
Councillor Jopling. Councillor K.
For.
Councillor Kellett.
For.
Councillor Kennedy.
For.
Councillor Lang.
For the motion.
Councillor Lethbridge.
For.
Councillor K Little. Councillor H Little.
For.
Councillor Madison.
For the motion.
Councillor Madeleine.
For.
Councillor McRice.
For the motion.
Councillor Manchester.
For the motion.
Councillor C Marshall.
For the motion.
Councillor L Marshall.
For.
Councillor Martin.
For.
Councillor E Mavon. Councillor L Mavon. Councillor McDonald.
For.
Councillor McKeon.
For.
Councillor McLean. Councillor Milburn.
For.
Councillor Morrison.
Support the motion.
Councillor Napier.
For.
Councillor Nicholson. Councillor Omerud.
For.
Councillor Patterson.
For the motion.
Councillor Potts.
For the motion.
Councillor Panda.
For.
Councillor Quinn.
For the motion.
Councillor Reed.
For the motion.
Councillor Richardson.
For.
Councillor J Robinson.
For.
Councillor Rawlinson.
For.
Councillor Savery.
For.
Councillor Scott.
For.
Councillor Sexton.
For.
Councillor Shaw.
For.
Councillor Shield.
For the motion.
Councillor Shutterworth.
For.
Councillor Simmons.
For the motion.
Councillor Simpson.
For.
Councillor H Smith.
For the motion.
Councillor T Smith.
For the motion.
Councillor Stevens.
For the motion.
Councillor Stevenson.
For the motion.
Councillor Stoker.
For.
Councillor Sertes.
For the motion.
Councillor Taylor.
For the motion.
Councillor Temple.
For.
Councillor Thompson. Councillor Tinsley.
For the motion.
Councillor Tucker.
For the motion.
Councillor Turnbull.
For the motion.
Councillor Watson.
For the motion.
Councillor Wilkes.
For.
Councillor Willis. Councillor C Wilson.
For.
Councillor M Wilson.
For.
Councillor S Wilson.
For.
Councillor Wood.
For the motion.
Councillor York.
For the motion.
Councillor Z. Can I ask if any member who wasn't able to cast their vote?
I was able to cast mine. Councillor Colonel Dell, for.
Thank you, councillor. Any others?
Councillor Jean Chaplin, for.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor, sorry. Any others? Thank you. No need to suspend the meeting, Chair. The vote is unanimous in favour.
Vote unanimously in favour. Therefore, the motion is carried. Thank you. That moves on to item thirty. Questions from members. One question has been submitted for today's meeting from councillor Liz Brown. Can I invite councillor Liz Brown to ask her question, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Liz Brown, Neville's Cross. In April this year, Durham County Council sent contract addendums to all care homes in County Durham. The addendum was not seen by cabinet members or any other councillor before it was sent. The addendum forced care homes to either accept Covid or potentially Covid-positive patients from hospitals, or not get the financial assistance being provided from the government by the council. This was, as confirmed in Parliament, categorically not government policy. County Durham has the highest death rate from care homes in the entire country. In addition, concerns are continually being raised about the refusal in County Durham by the powers that be to test professionals entering and travelling between care homes. The public in County Durham must have answers to what happened and what is happening in our care homes, most importantly, to make sure we do not see further unnecessary deaths. Requests to skew scrutiny for a review have been ignored. I therefore ask Cabinet, please, will you immediately commission a full, open, and transparent review of what has and is happening in our care homes involving all stakeholders and including what the impact of the horrendous contract addendum was? Chair, as is customary, I reserve the right to ask a supplementary question.
Can I ask councillor Lucy Hobbles to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair. Lucy Hobbles, councillor Lucy Hobbles, and I'm the portfolio for health and community safety. I'd like to thank councillor Brown for her question. Before responding, I would like to express my sincere condolences to all those who have sadly lost loved ones as a result of this panemetic. And place on record my thanks to all the staff working within social care and the NHS during this difficult time. In March, the government instructed, and I repeat the word, instructed, local authorities, including Durham County Council, to support with the discharge of patients from hospitals to make way for the anticipated surge in the number of admissions due to the Covid nineteen. Later that month, Durham County Council wrote care home providers asking for their support in accepting hospital discharges, and they had the capacity to do so. With this, with, sorry, just bear with me, the approach was based on both government guidelines and national advice shared with the council by the local government association, but was later revised following the publication of the government's Adult Social Care Action Plan, which was on the fifteenth of April. Supporting our care providers has been a key priority for this council. The support we have provided, working closely with our colleagues in the NHS and other partners, has included extensive financial support totaling over thirty million pounds, which has been provided to cover additional costs, assist with cash flow, and sustainability of the service. Support with sourcing the provision of PPE, providing the excessive 1.3 million pieces of PPE equipment to care providers. Support with testing, specialist advice and training on infection control. Support with additional staffing support through the County Durham Care Academy. We have recruited over forty staff into posts, with a further ninety being trained, ready for employment. Our staff have been in often daily contact with providers, I have been in touch with providers myself, to offer support and guidance. We have been able to offer psychological support for our care workers. Sadly, between March and June this year, County Durham experienced around sixty-six deaths for every one thousand care home beds we had. While this is unfortunately of little comfort to those or any of the families involved, it is important to note that this rate was in line with many other local authorities across the country and was far from being the worst in the UK. It is also important to note that we have one of the largest number of care homes within the country with over five thousand beds in the county. As I am sure you understand, all our resources are currently focused on managing and managing the evolving situation which is taking place and also the outbreaks of, which is ongoing of this coronavirus. I would not, I would not be right, therefore, to divert any of the essential resources away from the matter in hand in order to carry out an investigation at this time.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Brown, would you like to ask a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I take that's a no then, but Chair, history may well be repeating itself. We, the friends and family of those who died, are still in mourning. At the meeting of the Adults Wellbeing and Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee on the seventh of July, the head of adult care told members, "We will never know why the infection found its way into the facilities." This is on page fifteen of the minutes. And yet, the vulnerable are still being put at risk with the possibility once again of Covid-positive patients being released into our care homes. This review would give the answer that many members and the board...
You asked a question, councillor.
And I ask once again that it be commissioned.
Okay, thank you. That was the last item.
To come back and reply again?
Yes, 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 councillor.
I would not like the investigation to go... I would not like the investigation to go ahead at this moment in time because of the situation we find ourselves in. It may be something that we have to look at at a later date. And I think we all know that the social care system needs a lot of work being done in particular area. We know that the system's been broken for a very long time. I believe it's fractured, it's been underfunded, the staff have been undervalued and underpaid. This government needs to take responsibility. And I know the government have been asked to have an investigation. But this Conservative government has been in power for 10 years and they have a time to do something about social care and they haven't done it. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll hand over to Legal just to explain.
Chair, we've noticed there's quite a few people who've put requests to speak in the chat function, but this section of the council agenda is not a debate. Questions must be submitted in advance.
Okay, thank you. That was the last item on the agenda to conclude today's business. Before the meeting finishes, I'd like to thank everyone taking part and to those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting. If anyone in the meeting could please stay seated and remain silent until the broadcast ends. Thank you.